I'd like to call the April 15, 2025 City Council Meeting to order at 6:05. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Congratulations. Alderman Dash.
Here.
Alderman Cameron.
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Here.
Alderman Dolick.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. Approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the March 24, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Motion passes. Item four, presentations. We have the first item is the fiscal year 2025-26 Chicago Executive Airport Budget Presentation by Jason G. Griffith.
First off, before Jason comes up, Jeffrey Miller, you're Executive Director of the airport, I just want to say thank you for having us here today. You overlooked the budget, a couple big milestones that we're looking to do in the airport. We're turning 100 years old in 2026, so a lot of that planning is happening in 2025. We're the first airport in the Chicago Land Region to turn 100. We beat Midway by a year, so them and New Page are our closest competitors, and oh, here we don't even worry about it, I think they were like 1956, so anytime they try to push us around, we try to remember we're here like a few decades ahead of time, but we're doing that, and we're also planning for a new aviation community center, which what we're planning to do with that is a space for both communities to come and enjoy the airport, enjoy their asset, along with the higher education institutions to provide things like aircraft maintenance, technician programming, and then eventually flight training there. So we have some really cool priorities, we want to do some really neat things over 2026, and this budget somewhat reflects that. So it's been a good year at the airport, we have Sky Harbor, we're working through that process, you've probably seen the Ramada coming down, and thank you to Mayor Lovenson and the entire team, Joe Wade, Dan Peterson, all of you for working with us on that project. And right now, we're on schedule, aggressive timeline would be the fall of 2025, so this fall, to start the project there, we're working on the 624 closure, indeed commission of that runway, so it may, you know, if you're hedging your bets, be the spring of 2026, but right within there. So I'll leave it to Jason Griffith, but I wanted to say thank you for all your support throughout the last year, and I'll be sure for questions.
Thank you, Executive Director Miller. Thank you for having me, I believe this is my eighth year, and had the honor of presenting the budget. The fiscal year 26 Chicago Executive Airport budget goals are to continue to provide the resources to be a premier general aviation airport, maintain financial self-sufficiency, maintain appropriate revenue growth across all airport revenue streams, maintain operating expenses to ensure operational effectiveness, continue to utilize the reserve funds to minimize impact on the operating fund, and to increase the land, or building land reserve fund transfer to plan on for the new airport community center that Executive Director Miller mentioned. I would like to also point out that through this Friday, there, on the website, it is open to public comments, so if you'd like to put in your input on the building, please do so. So what is the executive, Chicago Executive Airport budget? In order to answer that question, I'm going to take a step back and first talk about the airport. Chicago Executive Airport is an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is a fund used to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to private business enterprises, where the intent of the governing body is that the cost expenses of providing goods or services to the public on a continuing basis be financed or recovered primarily through user charges. So if you use the airport, you pay for the airport, if you don't use the airport, you don't pay for the airport. The Chicago Executive Airport budget is an annual estimate of that fiscal year's revenues, operating expenses, debt service expenses, reserve fund transfers, and capital expenses. The airport budget comes in May to April fiscal year. It is developed with keeping the future operating and significant capital needs of the airport in mind. It is also developed to ensure the airport always remains self-sufficient. The budget focuses on today while preparing the airport for the future. Continuing out with the budget overview, the net income after reserve fund transfers to the FY '26 budget eats into the airport's reserves, a little over $700,000. The fiscal year '26 total budget and revenues are a little over $8.8 million, that is a $1.3 million increase from fiscal year '25, and a little over 18% overall. But the largest revenue stream growth from this is going to be from jet A fuel flowage. We've increased that fee, it's the airport's best way to take advantage of transient aircraft, so aircraft coming from someplace else. So that is the largest driver of that revenue increase, along with long-term leases, US Customs Service fees, and other fee increases. Total budget operating expenses for the combined departments is a little over $5.9 million, a little over $430,000 increase, 7.88% from the fiscal year '25. As Executive Director Miller mentioned, the 100-year anniversary is coming up, so with that, we have budgeted increases to public relations and marketing expenses in preparation of the 100-year celebrations, engineering service increases, lease development increases, legal fees. R stand by, so mostly operators from Europe can request firefighters to stand by in order for them to be on site when they land. So that's new, no one has taken advantage of it yet, but there are some expenses associated with it. Increases to insurance, US Customs operational expenses, maintenance hour increases, vehicle maintenance across our entire fleet, and visual aid, which includes common markers. Unrestricted net assets available, this is set by the airport business plan, it stays in the airport business plan that every budget year, the airport is supposed to take the budget operating expenses, so this year a little over $5.9 million, multiplied by 25%, so that comes to a little under $1.5 million. The estimated running balance on the airport's operating fund on April 30, 2025, $4.6 million meets that requirement. The debt covenants that the airport has, liquidity covenants, takes that same budgeted operating amount for expenses of a little over $5.9 million, times 180 days divided by 365 days, so that debt covenant comes out to about $2.9 million, and then again, the $4.6 million the airport should have on hand in the operating fund on April 30, 2025 is sufficient to cover that covenant. The airport has four sub-reserve funds, the airport has sewer fees for all its tenants, and everything that gets charged to a sewer fee is directly put into the sewer reserve fund for any potential sewer repairs that are needed. The VERF is a transfer from the operating fund, it starts the balance with $805,000 and with $528,000. You will see that there is a potential purchase for a new broom, which is a significant hit at over $700,000 for that piece of equipment, they are vital for snow operations, these machines sweep snow off the runway, so it doesn't impact and there's no ice buildup. The building and land reserve fund has a projected starting balance of $2.4 million and an estimating ending balance of a little over $3.4 million. The capital repair and demo fund, which is our newest sub-reserve fund, this is made up of a transfer of 5% of all long-term leases, and the fees charged to hangar five and six tenants has a projected starting balance of $700,000 with an estimating ending balance of $840,000. Some self-funded capital projects, facilities of 110, fencing gates landscaping of 15, security improvements, the airport started about three years ago to continually improve our security all across the airfield, so this is a continuation of that program, payment repairs of $350,000, this is a little higher than prior years, capital outlay of potential office equipment of $30,000, vehicle and equipment repairs of $36,000. Again, this is separate from VERF, these funds aren't in the budget to be utilized to purchase new equipment, but they are used to maintain that snow fleet, and there's no many significant repairs that extend the life of the vehicle, that's where these funds would come from. Budgeted shop equipment of a little over $88,000, capital outlay of just under $83,000, and then potential preparation for capital construction of $5 million. Capital aid projects, so this is taken directly from our TIPS plan, every October, airport staff meets with the FAA, Illinois Department of Aeronautics, our engineers down in Springfield, and we go through the next five years of capital programs that we would like to add in there. So with that, we have the continuation of the master drainage study, the expansion of the East Quad Apron, the hotspot reconfiguration of taxiways, and then the Northeast Quadrant Apron and Taxiway access, a fancy way of saying relocating the airport tie-ons from where they currently are, behind the Ramada and 1098 building on Milwaukee, up to the Northeast Quadrant, east of the T-hangers that are currently out there. Total airport local share a little over $560,000, with total project expenses of $12.7 million. In this year's budget, you will notice that the R-CIP is no longer a capital aid project, this comes from talking with our auditors, R-CIP's unique, so the airport, along with the federal government and the state, is not participating as well, going into people's homes to reduce the noise inside the homes. So after talking with our auditors, it's not a true capital project, because the airport is never receiving the windows, the doors, we're never receiving the project that we're paying for, so there's no good way to depreciate it over time, but it's also not truly an operating expense, because it doesn't directly affect the operation, the airport or keeping it open. With that, so it's on its own stand of page in the budget now, with potential grant revenues of $2.25 million, with total expenses of $2.5. Ultimately, the state did sign on to participate, so the airport's local share would be $125,000 on this project. And that is a summary of the budget. Jeff, Executive Director Miller, I have your questions.
Any questions on the airport budget?
Very clear.
That was a summary of a very long document, so.
Right.
It was, you know, I liked the presentation that you guys have in your actual budget document, it's very self-explanatory, but if there's no questions.
Question, where's the communities, where were you planning to put in the community center?
Yeah, thank you. So right now, we're working, the location will be near the old 94th Restaurant, so off Tower Road, just south of Signature, so that's general.
So it'd be like right in that little general, where the old restaurant used to be?
Correct, yeah, so we will finally probably have a location where our sign exists, if you're right now in Milwaukee.
Okay.
So yeah, it would be there, which would have a nice view of the airport, and so we have, Director Griffith mentioned the survey we have, and thank you to Joe Wade, I know you've put it out in your newsletter as well, and we've been asking for community input, but we've had some really cool ideas about things like playgrounds and stuff, and so we want to make something that's really neat for the communities.
Okay. And I have another question, the, the snow thing that you said, that was cost like $700, $700,000?
Closer to, I want to say $775,000, I'm not remembering the exact number from the budget at this time, but it's close to that.
What was, what did you guys get last year?
That was a snow blower.
Snow blower, okay, okay.
Yes.
And how, okay, so why is it so expensive, how old is the sweeper that you have now?
That one, I want to say it's a '96, the snow blower we replaced last year with a 1990, I want to say this one's a '96 or '98.
So we have a point system that our maintenance department puts together for vehicles, that they assess each year which ones kind of can do for service, especially how much we're putting into maintenance.
Correct, yeah.
That usually starts the way out to purchase a new one.
Yeah, start off the 100-year celebration with, with a new one.
It'll be there the next 100 years. Hey, you got us beat, I thought we had the world's oldest.
1999.
1999, yeah, so that's pretty good.
And then my last question, I'm sorry, Mayor, for the $30,000 for the office, what, is that like computers, what is that for?
Yeah, it's correct, it's the potential computers, and then we have an older server that is on its last legs that we are potentially going to replace.
Okay.
If we don't go cloud.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Garfield's Beverage's request to discuss the prohibition of Delta 8 and Delta 9 THC products, is anybody here for that? State your name and.
Adam Silverstein, CEO of Garfield's Beverage. So today, I wanted just to discuss the ban on THC that was put into effect a couple weeks ago. At Garfield's, we do carry those products, or we used to for that matter, it's a large growing segment of the adult beverage industry, it's something that was made legal through the, I want to say, 2019 farm bill. And what we're seeing right now in our industry is a big shift from people changing their drinking habits, changing the way that they consume, not only alcohol, but also the legalization of recreational cannabis, changing the whole landscape in this kind of intoxicating drink space. It's something that we have expanded our store sets, typically we offer around, we're from like a four to eight foot section, we really take a hard look at the brands that we're carrying, because we want to do the best that we can before something hits the shelves to make sure that the products are vetted, it's not coming from a bad actor, and so on and so forth. What Illinois is kind of in the Wild West right now is a full state. There's a couple different pieces of legislation that's been working its way through Springfield, and there's been some other action from local municipalities that, much like yourselves, have taken the stance to outright ban it, while some other municipalities are figuring out ways to regulate it, which I think that common sense legislation in this standpoint really would be the best action to move forward. Our stance is that we believe 100% it should be a 21 and older product, much like alcohol, it's something that needs to be monitored at selling, and there needs to be some recourse behind the actors that are selling the product to make sure people aren't drinking and driving, people aren't intoxicated when they're purchasing. Much of what we're seeing downstate is seeing people, seeing the state attempt to go with 21 and older, limiting the classification of the THC drinks, so there's Delta 8, there's Delta 9, and then there's also kratom, which is something that our standpoint is get rid of it, it's not natural, it doesn't really come in that farm bill, it was a workaround for a lot of people, and then moving it into the liquor channel, which is what we'll probably see happen downstate in a couple months, because that way there is different mechanisms for municipalities to regulate and to tax. Economically, the hemp-derived THC industry contributes significantly to local economies, supporting small businesses, farmers, and retailers who rely on hemp cultivation product sales. Banning these products would financially harm these stakeholders while consolidating sales within licensed dispensaries, reducing competition and adversity in the marketplace. Additionally, Delta 8, Delta 9 THC products provide consumers with legal alternatives to marijuana, opioids, pharmaceuticals for managing pain, anxiety, and stress. Removing these products from the market would limit access to options that many individuals depend on for wellness. Regulation is a much more effective approach, addressing safety concerns, proper oversight, age restrictions, legal requirements, and product testings could ensure consumer safety without eliminating the market entirely. Regulation would also address issues such as mislabeled THC content or unsafe contaminants in products. Completely prohibiting the sale of a legal product on a local level only leads to driving consumers towards online markets, other legal municipal markets, or to other regulated black market products, which pose greater health risks. Regulating these substances would provide safer options for adults, while protecting minors through age restrictions and advertising controls. A regulatory approach better serves public health, economic interests, and consumer needs. That's really our standpoint. So we're hoping to pull in the conversation back up to eliminating the ban and trying to find a way that we could regulate it, so we can bring it back to the shelves and serve the community.
So when you talk about how we can regulate it, meaning you, what do you, how do you propose to regulate it? I want to understand that better.
So there's a couple different mechanisms that the municipality can do, one would be creating its own license and attaching that license to a liquor license. That way, you would know that the business that's selling the product is best certified, has more at stake than just a gas station on the corner or a vape shop that's opening up, and there's also different ways that you guys would be able to track the sales and also tax the product.
Does that already exist with the dispensaries?
The dispensary, it's, that's a tricky situation, because dispensaries, which Illinois has already faced lawsuits for for the way that they did the licensing, is being gobbled up pretty much by all big corporations, there's not too many left out there. The THC producers and the dispensaries have backed off from their standpoint of trying to force these products only through the dispensary route as well.
Well, there is a mechanism in place that they could go there, because it is regulated and highly regulated.
But it.
And it's in the same vein as, it's in the same line of business that they're already doing, right?
They would, it, yes and no, this is why, it's like kind of, it's the Wild West that really.
Right, but I mean, you're concerned there's regulation, it already exists, I mean, there's places that are able to sell THC products, and those are the dispensaries, right, so it makes sense that they would go there.
But it's also still legal for a retailer to sell this classification coming from the hemp plant, so.
Unless it's not.
And unless if the municipality chooses to say no, which totally understand, we're just trying to let it be known that it's something from our standpoint that we would like to be able to continue selling it, we would like to be able to continue to have the opportunities to educate consumers on it, as opposed to only allowing it through the recreational avenue.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was, thank you, I, something we talked about a few weeks back is the fact that we, being a relatively small municipality, we don't have the staff and manpower to look into this and regulate it and make sure that it's only being sold to 21 and over, any tax revenues would be used up in that staffing or additional staffing that we would make. So it's not really a benefit to us, and as the mayor just said, it's, it is available at a dispensary, so for those who rely on this for their emotional well-being, or however you want to phrase it, it is available, but for us to try and regulate that, it's a huge burden on us, and that's, and that's a challenge for, for a community this size, we're, we're what, 17,000 people in a small police department, that's, that's a real challenge for us.
Small but very good.
I'm sorry.
It might.
I meant no offense to our police department.
No offense taken, sir.
And that's, to kind of comment on that, that's why the three-tier system was kind of put in place for alcohol was to help with the regulation side of it, and what we're seeing with what's going on downstate along with other municipalities is allowing businesses that operate with liquor license or tying it to a liquor license as a side, like an add-on part of it, does give the municipality a way that they can verify that the person or the business that's operating has been vetted, you guys feel that they are competent enough to control the product, and that's how like the legislature feels, and that's how they're looking at it right now as well.
So you have 10 locations, correct?
Eleven.
Eleven, so of those 11 locations, how many of those still have the ability to sell these kinds of products?
Well, nine, no.
Nine, so nine of your 11 are selling them legally through municipal?
Yep.
So I have a question, so our ban is, how does that exempt the dispensaries, how's our ban exempting the dispensaries?
It doesn't exempt them, but it doesn't, it's a THC product, I mean, they're licensed to sell THC products.
Well, but not if you're banning them in the city, that was a big question I had about whether or not the dispensaries can even sell them.
Well, we can't regulate what the dispensary sells.
Well, we can, well, that's a big question, I'm not sure about that, maybe we need to check that better, but in any event, so the idea that you're proposing is that we would regulate it through a liquor license type or a licensed, licensure type of manner, so we would license it either separately or in conjunction with a liquor license.
You can make a restriction on the, call it new license, that the holder must have a class, a package bids license, whatever class, like prospect heights, whatever they call it.
There are a lot of those locations.
That are for liquor.
That sell liquor, yeah, we're not, you're not the only one in town.
Yeah, no, 100%, and I'm okay with that.
Right.
We're just, we're trying to.
Walgreens sells liquor.
And they would be.
Tony's Food sells liquor, I want people, the kids walk that, going to, to the point somebody else brought up, what, what's your volume that you sell on prospect heights? If you don't want to say, you don't have to, but what are we talking about?
I prefer not to say it in an open public forum, but I'd be more than happy to have that conversation off.
Okay, but you said, how big a self-space were you talking about?
Currently, we, in prospect heights, we had a four-foot section, we, and the other stores that we do carry it, we've been expanding it from four to eight to 12, just following the consumer trend.
I mean, it's not 50% or 40 or even 30% of what you sell at the store, I would think volume-wise.
It's a very new segment of our industry.
So to the point of us being able to control this and the limited revenue it would bring in, I mean, it's, it's not something that I think is advantageous to us, but, and that's not the only reason, I mean, we would want to regulate it, we'd want to make sure kids weren't getting it, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a drink, it's, it's kind of a new thing, it's easy for kids to get, I mean, and I know you're going to say so, is alcohol, you know, and other things, but it's just, you know, we made the decision that we didn't want that here, because we didn't want to have to spend all that time and effort regulating something that could be detrimental to the community, and that, that was a decision that, that we made as a council.
And we fully understand that, as I'm sure some of you are aware, there are products that are out in the marketplace that are alcohol, that have attached themselves to consumables such as like a Dunkin' Donuts spiked drink, or Monster has an alcohol version, or Dunkin' Donuts does, and really quickly, the state realized when those products were coming to market that there had to be a better way to regulate those in stores, so the state passed legislation that required like a food and drug establishment, or a Walgreens, or a gas station that, where those products had to be stocked separate from consumables from under 21 in a separate area, that there wasn't the confusion for a kid walking up and saying, oh, it's the Dunkin' Donuts logo, that's what I'm going to grab. For us, the way that we would look at it is, you know, our store policy is 21 and over, regardless of who's coming in and out or what they're purchasing, using the full liquor store license would eliminate the grocery stores of the world if the concern was that a kid is walking in and being able to mistakenly grab one of those products, and it gets sold underage, much like any other alcohol product.
I don't believe we had this, I don't believe we had our grocery store selling this product, I mean, so they made a decision that it wasn't something that they wanted to do either, probably because, you know, it's a novelty, the kids are going to go. The kids are going to go, and go in there, see it, and it, it is a new thing, it's a flashy new thing. Do we have problems with people buying alcohol in town? Every town does that are underage? Yeah. This just adds to that complexity, and there's really no benefit to us. It might be a benefit to you, but as far as the city and the community, there's, there's really not a benefit.
I mean, the benefit to us is the revenue, is a tax revenue that we would give the city.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's why he's here, right? Because it's, it's a hardship to his business, and that's why I was telling Wendy, like, are we looking at this because we don't believe that Delta 8 and Delta 9 THC products are good for the public? Or are we looking at it as like a hardship to these businesses? Like, there's, there's two separate ways to look at this. And I would have to go back and look at some of the, what we were provided, but are these products regulated? Like, alcohol and cannabis products are regulated?
So right, right now, there is, when you say regulated, do you mean like the formulas and the product quality and standards?
Yes.
There are a lot of companies, much of the ones that we work with that do self-regulation, they put the lab tests on the package or have it available on the website of the brand so you know exactly what's in it, what it tested out to, strength, so on and so forth.
So is, and this is my area, not my area of expertise, so like at Zenleaf or a marijuana dispensary, are those products also self-regulated or someone else regulates them?
If I, if I can provide some clarification, when this first started out, but just real briefly to, to the previous point regarding dispensaries. So our new revised ordinance specifically states when it defines illicit THC products, they are, which are products that are not made to be sold at cannabis business establishments duly licensed under the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Program. So that's what allows dispensaries to sell these products. Now, when it comes to these THC products, they're not FDA-approved or regulated, and that is the biggest concern with these products. Yes, there are independent labs out there that certify them and put on their labels on the packaging what's inside of them, but there is no authoritative government drug and food testing agency that says this is certified and this is exactly what it is. So the substances and the content inside of them is very unknown and uncertain, and that is really the biggest reason why these products pose such a hazard and a potential danger to the consumers. While Mr. Silverstein, right, is that your name, sir?
Yes.
While you may do your own research and, and study these labs, but we can't in no way, shape, or form say that what these labs are providing to you is true and accurate. It's not governed by, by FDA or any other agency as such to say that what's in these products is exactly what it is in them. A lot of these products are, they, they have a lot of serious health concerns, and when they are, you know, when they're mixed and, and, and put together, it's, it's uncertain what's inside of them. And so the danger aspect of it to consumers outside of cannabis dispensaries is where our main concern is.
I was in your store on Monday. It's a beautiful store. Thank you very much for having me. It's beautiful. Was up, and I did purchase some, some wine. And I've owned stores myself for many, many years. Four-foot size, that's what you had in there, is not compelling to your income, unless you want to move it to 12 feet and 20 feet, now you really want to be a cannabis store. And so I heard you say that you have nine other locations, and some of them have that. Well then, now we're talking about, the whole focus on your store would be to grow that. That, I'd have a big problem with that.
In relation to what the linear footage is, it would still, if we were to expand that set as we were proposing, it would really only be about seven to eight percent in total square footage of what our linear footage is on the shelving.
But, so I have a question. So is marijuana or cannabis, is that FDA-regulated?
I don't think it is.
Well, the products that are sold in dispensaries are regulated under the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Program Act.
Stay sober.
All of their, all of their products that are sold in order to maintain their certification are regulated.
Okay.
They're not FDA-approved.
But they are regulated by-
They are regulated by, by the state, yes.
And these products are not regulated at all?
That is correct. The individual establishment, as Mr. Silverstein, he does his own research, and there are independent labs out there and companies that regulate them, certify them, and, and, and put the contents of them, but there is no regulation by the state per se.
Which is why the state is in the process of coming up with these mechanisms so that there is accountability behind the products.
So yeah, so if the state came up with regulations, we could certainly revisit our current position that we've chosen not to sell these within our municipality.
We have somebody here, Chris, subject matter expert on maybe this topic.
Yeah, I'll just say something very quickly. I'm Chris Dorfes, I'm the director-
I'm not feeling like, oh.
Oh, the microphone, okay. I'm Chris Dorfes, Director of Link Together Corporation. We work to empower youth to remain substance-free and keep our communities safe. Just a simple explanation of the Farm Bill will answer a lot of your questions. I worked on the Farm Bill at the national level, with Senator Durbin on the agricultural committee, and locally in Springfield for a few years. And the Farm Bill was designed to protect our farmers that grow hemp. So we wanted them to continue to grow their hemp, and they were making CBB products fine, because we didn't want to take that income away, but then there was people going after that hemp plant and deriving all kinds of other unregulated products. And Delta 8 THCO are just a couple, but when we're looking to close the loophole of the Farm Bill, like your chief said, there's a lot of them out there, and tomorrow there may be another one discovered. So those are all unregulated, okay? Anything outside of the marijuana dispensary is unregulated. The dispensaries are run very well, and they have to follow the regulations, they have to follow the packaging. Joe sat at a town hall we did, and we went into vape shops and gas stations throughout your area, throughout Wheeling Township, throughout Southern Lake County, and the products sold there are not regulated, and they're self-packed, and they were tested, and they don't always match in the regulations. So that's what we're just looking for, is that any products with the THC in it are regulated and go through the same requirements that were just explained to you, and as far as a dispensary being sold, a dispensary. And the liquor stores are a whole other ballgame. But there's people out there trying to make the money off of unregulated products, and as I said to Senator Durbin, let alone in a kid's hand, I, if someone in my life chose to use marijuana, I want them to buy at a dispensary, not the unregulated kind. So I hope that simplifies it for you. Your dispensaries run great, following all the rules, you know that, their products are safe, if someone's going to use it, buy it there. But if they're just, how did you put it about the self-tested and labeled, I would want higher grade evaluation and labeling done to ensure that it is correct. So, does that answer your question about it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have applied appointments, confirmations, and proclamations. Let me turn my mic on. Item five, appointments, confirmations, and proclamations, we have none. Item six, public comments on agenda matters. Does anybody here have something on an agenda matter item?
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Jim Lorizal.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lorizal, I'm a resident of Prospect Heights and a tenant on the airport. I'm here tonight to ask you to amend the airport budget, but for fiscal year 2026 and not raise the rents for all the tenants and the FBOs on the airport. The airport's on pace to have another unallocated surplus of $1 million at the end of this year's budget. This will be the fifth year that they have a surplus in excess of $1 million. We've heard they have a need, the raises included in the leases and contracts, and they can't operate in the margins. My point is, if there truly is a need, it should be in the budget, and not have a 20% surplus every year. I know no one on the airport, and that includes one of the FBOs that I've spoken to, that would object to no rent increase this year. As for the margins, the airport keeps six months' expenses in reserve, the airport would still, even though they didn't raise the rents, would still have approximately $500,000 in surplus left over from last year. The airport is and has been self-sufficient from the beginning, and that's a good thing, and I support that. The land's been purchased with state and federal funds, no money from the airport to the communities, and more importantly, no money from the communities to the airport. In the executive director's message to you, he mentioned an aviation community center. It's been mentioned that it may include a playground. Isn't this a function of your park districts? A banquet facility with dressing rooms and kitchens, that would be in competition to your other businesses in your communities. It would also include a 200-space parking lot. Is this really the best use of the limited land for the airport? Is this what the surplus funds are being used for, for playgrounds and banquet facilities? Those are not aviation-related uses. I believe the surplus fund should be given back to the users and tenants of the airport that created the surplus. There should be no rent increase in this year's airport budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before the consent agenda, I'd like to ask that we have an executive session for, we have that somewhere. Pursuant to, executive session, pursuant to sections one and two. So we need a motion going, it'll be very short, very quick. We need a motion to go into executive session.
So move, Anderson.
Wait, I just want a clarification. One and two, which one and two are you talking about?
Oh, sections one and two of the open meeting.
Oh, 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 got it, okay, all right, all right, thank you.
So we have a motion from, who?
Terry.
Terry.
Second.
Second?
Cameron.
Got it, got it.
Who's second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close? Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. I look for a motion to pass the consent agenda items A through E.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Obviously, any questions or comments? Consent agenda. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no old business, new business, we have quite a few things here. First one is a first reading, so no action. It is ordinance O-2506, staff memo and ordinance amending Title I of the City Code adopting the Pay Plan Compensation of Officers' Employee Salaries and Pay Plan. This is a first reading, it'll be on our next April meeting. If you have any questions, if Peter or Joe are called. Item B, ordinance is also a first reading only, no action required. Ordinance O-2507, staff memo and ordinance adopting the fiscal 2526 budget for the city of Prospect Heights. There'll be a public hearing at 6 o'clock.
Joe?
Yes.
What date is that? The 28th of April, where the second reading will be read and passed. The item C is also a first reading. Ordinance O-2508, business liquor license request and ordinance increasing the number of B3 liquor licenses from one to two. Wait.
Seven to eight.
Got the revised one here. Item C, ordinance O-2508, business liquor license request and ordinance increasing the number of B liquor licenses from seven to eight. Full liquor Monday through Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight for Deli for You. Market, 9 East Camp McDonald Road. Again, this is just the first reading. Item B, another first reading. Ordinance O-2509, staff memo and ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax for the city of Prospect Heights. Again, this is a first reading. Item E. Where's the backside of my ear? Item E is a resolution, R-2524, staff memo and resolution authorizing and awarding bid recommendation for the Levy 37 wall repair project with Alliance Contractors Incorporated for a cost of $1,148,765, with a recommended 10% contingency for unforeseen underground So, a motion and a second on that.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Anderson.
Have a motion and a second of discussion.
Is the 1.148,765, is that our cost?
Yes.
That's not, okay, so that's not including any grant or anything?
There's $750,000 of state appropriation money that Senator Morrison was able to obtain for us. So we're responsible for the allowed access of that.
Okay, so it's just the not that.
Right, right.
That makes a big difference. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was a sizable difference.
So we have a motion and a second for the approval. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F, resolution R-2525, staff memo and resolution approving an amendment to the employee manual of the city of Prospect Heights. Motion to approve.
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
What does this, what is this about?
The only, the only change that occurred was is there's going to be a stipend for translator, is that the right way to say that? Bilingual translators.
Oh, okay.
For any staff members that are bilingual-
Oh, I remember that.
-that we can call on them to translate for us, if need be. So it's only applicable to anybody who fits that qualification. So we have a motion and a second? We do? Right?
Yep.
The other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G, resolution R-2526, resolution approving a legal services agreement between the city of Prospect Heights and Tressler LLP. This is just a agreement between the city and our city attorney.
So move, Anderson.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Cameron.
Any questions or comments?
And how is it different from the last one?
Rates? No, go ahead.
Just the rates?
Yes, it's identical except for the rates.
Yeah, the rates went up, I saw.
I'm sorry, identical?
Except for rates.
Except for the rates.
The rates went up.
Oh, man. I thought it was going to go down this year.
Not this year, maybe next year.
Thanks a lot.
The Cubs, yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick.
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams.
Aye.
Alderman Cameron.
Aye.
Alderman Dash.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports. We'll start on my right. Peter, anything?
No, sir.
We'll go down the line, anything?
Yes, sir. Just a real quick update on the Wolf Road sidewalk. Canadian National Railway Accura, our contractor, and our city engineers have been working diligently this week. Things are really coming together for the crossing. That was kind of our big layover part of it from last season. They're moving along, we're still shooting for a June opening for the crossing gates at the railroad tracks to be operational. So I'm really pleased that we're back on track, and Canadian National is steering the, steering us in the right way right now. So that's it, just a real positive thing for that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Real quick, just for all you listeners out there, please plan ahead for your projects as the weather has been really good, our permit applications have been increasing, and you do need to allow time for us to perform the proper reviews and processing of your permits. for us to perform the proper reviews and processing of your permits, so please plan ahead. Any questions at all that you have, please call us at the Building Department, and we'll be happy to answer them for you related to your project. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
No report, thank you.
Lloyd?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, I don't know if anyone saw today, but our website had our redesign launch. Um, I think Patrick's getting up there actually on the board, maybe in front of you. Um, we knew, uh, we went over a couple weeks ago, or maybe a couple months ago now, but this is what the final product looked like. We have our eight graphic buttons, um, our updated news and calendar here, our fix social media buttons on the right. City spotlight for events at the bottom, new footer there, and then if we go to our agendas and minutes, it takes us to our new public portal. Um, a lot of searchability ca- search capabilities, um, for residents to find what they need, um, and those are kind of the highlights, so this launched today, and pretty happy with it.
Nice.
Great.
Very nice, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple quick apartment updates. Uh, I'm pleased to announce that we have, we have filled some specialty positions that, uh, council members have asked about. I've sent some email updates to give you a recap. Uh, Major Case Assistance Team Serious Traffic Crash Reconstruction was filled by Officer Amari. It's a team composed of, uh, several, um, surrounding jurisdictions. They respond to serious crash accidents, uh, where there are fatalities. They investigate and determine the cause of the accident, so we're excited that Officer Amari has been selected to join that team. Also, the Major Case Assistance Surveillance Team Sergeant Parib Diol has joined that team. It's another MCAT team, uh, joint, uh, task force team which assists, um, different municipalities in, um, major crimes, major incidents when surveillance teams are required. And lastly, our NIPIS Mobile Field Force position has been filled by Officer Musson. This is the, um, so NIPIS has two teams, they have an EST, an emergency SWAT team, and they have a mobile field force. Mobile field force is utilized in riots and mass gatherings. So, we're excited that all three of those positions, they've been vacant for some time, they have been filled by our officers, which now allow us to utilize those resources if we were to have any of those situations in Prospect Heights. Lastly, I want to mention that with the start of this year, there's been a lot of laws changed and updated regarding bicycles, e-bikes, low-speed electric scooters, um, and such. I'll just, uh, briefly say that, um, e-bikes, you will see a lot of those, they're not allowed on sidewalks. Um, low-speed electric bicycles, they can travel in the same location as pedal-powered bicycles. Um, um, gas bicycles, um, riders must be at least 16 years old to ride a gas bicycle, gas-powered bicycle. And, um, uh, road sharing rules for cyclists, those still apply. Um, cyclists are, are to ride as close as practicable to the right-hand curb or edge of the road, instead of riding in the middle of the road. But if anybody wants more detailed information, uh, we will be putting this on our website with all of these law updates. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Elective on, on my left, any comments?
I just wanted to remind everyone, some people didn't know, but Rich, our city treasurer, Rich Tibbetts, was hospitalized, uh, late December. Uh, he was there for quite some time, but he's home recuperating, you know, getting stronger. It's kind of a long process to get stronger again, so it'd be nice if people can, um, send him some cards, good will wishes, so, thank you.
Michelle?
Um, I have no report, but I wanted to congratulate, uh, Alderman Anderson, um, on her election this, this month. Wait, you're official, I guess? Thank you. I'm very happy to serve, I'm really excited. Glad to have you.
Wendy?
No.
No, anybody? Nothing, okay. Um, we'll go on to item 11, approval of warrants. Will the clerk read the, um, warrants and wire and payroll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the total of the warrants was $295,813.42. We had wire payments, one on March 21st, 2025 payroll was, uh, $180,679.19, followed by April 4th payroll, uh, the amount was $176,537.71. Bringing the total warrant to $653,030.32 for council's approval, uh, tonight, please.
All right, thank you. We need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, is there anybody here with, no, there is not. I'm gonna make that determination.
Jeff, do you have anything? You sure?
No, no.
You sure?
Yeah. Okay, I don't, uh, no, it's not official, executive session, no action on that session. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Anderson. Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Close, say nay. We're adjourned.